We can all come up and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, everyone, welcome. Alice, if you could do a roll call for us?
Here.
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 Alright, I know that, I know that Chris is under the weather, so I know it's ridiculous. Okay, anybody got anything for liaison reports today?
Just saw one, quick one, I'm working with an individual Lockport resident, he was trained at Second City, and I kinda mentioned this a few months back, and maybe it could bring some portable family entertainment to his ears, so I'll be sitting down with Ben, come up with some ideas, and see how we could get that off the ground, so that's pretty much the report.
Alright, very good. Anybody else have anything going on? Alright. I want to take the time tonight to swear in a new chaplain into the police department, Ernest. So Ernest, if you and your wife can come on over to the podium, I'd like to do that. As you know, the chief has been very proactive, creating a community-oriented department, and really finding new ways to ensure that happens, making sure that our citizens feel like, Police Department is really, you know, there to protect them, kinda like a big brother. And I think the department has been doing a great job, and the leadership team has been fantastic. And so, part of that process has been to have some police chaplains, which we've expanded, they're volunteers, the cost to the city is basically a uniform, but they volunteer their time, and I think it's essential. It's another one of those outreaches to the community, that people might be able to feel more comfortable with at times. So, I'm very excited that Ernest has volunteered to do this. Ernest goes to the Apostolic Church on the corner on Jefferson. What's the name of it, Ernest? Christ Vision Community Church. But what times, sometimes we go for a walk, and I hear it thumping, man, on Sunday night, so it's good. Well, come on over, we'll swear you in. Alright, so you'll raise your right hand, yeah. Okay. I, Ernest Jones.
I, Ernest Jones.
Solemnly swear that I will provide.
Solemnly swear that I will provide.
Pastoral care to those experiencing.
Pastoral care to those experiencing.
Extreme grief as a result of suicide.
Extreme grief as a result of suicide.
Homicide.
Homicide.
Traffic and fire fatalities.
Traffic and fire fatalities within the city of Lockport. Within the city of Lockport.
I will also provide comfort and counsel to police officers.
I will also provide comfort and counsel to police officers.
I will work extensively to build positive support.
I will work extensively to build positive support.
And understanding between the Police Department and the Lockport community.
And understanding between the Police Department and the Lockport community.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Alright, very good. Well, why don't we just go ahead and move on? Ben, what do you got going on with New Lennox these days?
Thank you Mayor and members of the council, the first item on the agenda is CA-1, Extension of the New Lenox Boundary Agreement. We had a 20-year agreement with New Lenox, going back to 1995, it's fairly typical agreements, we have similar ones with other communities surrounding us. And we wanted to renew that, and one parcel in particular was really the only change we're recommending. We've met with their staff, Tom and I had met with their administrator and staff members, and there's one particular parcel we call the Buck Property, and I didn't have it in the packet, but I did make hard copies and provide it to you tonight. There's just an example and map of what we're actually talking about. The one parcel owned by a gentleman was actually kinda cut in half by the city of, city of Lockport and Village of New Lenox. And we've agreed to take that on to our boundary agreement, it's, the access to it would become off of Bruce Road. If there's ever an extension on 355 and Bruce Road, it would more likely maybe even become commercial someday. So I think it's good for the city of Lockport to go ahead and take that. Christiana, Pam and I also reviewed the provisions, New Lenox is only asking if we take the property that, we adhere to their code in regards to buffering for any residential that would be placed nearby. And again, staff reviewed those covenants and feel comfortable in what they're requesting. So, we've got the agreement for you in your packet, and Tom has worked with the New Lenox attorney in regards to the languages that we're using in here, but again, it's pretty much kind of renewing the other 20-year agreement, other than the one change in the one parcel.
Very good. Any questions?
Ben, a quick question, now as we're working on this, it looks fine. Can you also talk to New Lenox, you know how we talked about at the corner of Oak and Gallagher? There used to be a street light there, for some reason it was taken down. It'd be nice to have New Lenox put it back, because it's under their jurisdiction. It'd be nice to have a street light there.
Yes, and we can kinda formally follow up with them, I've had some conversations with their administrator. We weren't sure if it was us or the county, but it was, we figured out that it is New Lenox, and certainly we can send that request along to them again officially.
At least find out what happened, I'm kinda curious.
It's very dark, if anyone's turned that corner, the last time I turned that corner in the dark, almost hit the.
Oh, when you say a street light, you mean a light, not a traffic light?
Yeah, not a traffic light, but actually to illuminate, it's very dark at that corner.
Alright, sounds good. Is there something we could, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just one question, real brief, are utilities, whose utilities are the closest to, is that cities?
Good question.
We don't know, that's okay, you can let me know, it's not, just curious.
Because most of that area down there is, I think, unincorporated, but.
No problem, I didn't need an answer tonight, so.
I actually had a real quick question, but I forgot, did you have to actually tell the owners of that property that?
We, from what I'm understanding, New Lenox has spoken to him, and we are, I believe we're gonna do a hearing through the process, Tom?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the state statute that authorizes boundary agreements requires a 30-day publication of notice in the newspaper, and then 15-day notice of posting it at City Hall. We, the statute doesn't require us to notify the property owners, the statute presumes that they follow what's in the legal ads in the paper. Usually though, when you have a parcel like this, as a courtesy, we inform the owner. So we'll work with New Lenox and make sure the owner of the parcel knows that the parcel will be on the, on Lockport's side of the boundary line with a restriction regarding screening. Everything else remains the same as it was, as it was approved in 1995, with the original boundary agreement. So, I think all of the property owners know which side of the line they're on.
And again, I do believe that request actually came from New Lenox as an item for discussion, and I believe they've already had the conversation with that property owner, but we'll make sure that we have it.
Okay, is this something you need approval for us, from us, next meeting?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we would like to schedule it for one of the March meetings, and we'll probably end up placing it on the second meeting in March because of the 30-day publication of notice requirement.
Okay, sounds good. So for that meeting, are we good with the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, what else you got, Ben?
Thank you Mayor and members of the council, the next item is CA-2, Water Infrastructure Development Plan and Sanitary Sewer Conveyance Plans. As you know, the city is constantly changing and growing, and we need to figure out ways to have connections, routing and sizing requirements for our growth and development and growing demands. We certainly have had the water system plan looked at in the past, in 2007, 2010, and I'm recommending that we take a new look at this in regards to what we're gonna implement over the next three to five years. You know, the city has made a decision about, so with this council, to select Strand as our consultant for water, and we've been getting their input and working with them, with staff, in regards to directions and priorities and what we can do. But we can't sit idle, we need to be able to continue to look at water storage and sourcing requirements. Someday we're gonna have to worry about some treatment plant processing and capacities, and again, we can't afford to do nothing. So, what we wanna do is continue to take a look at what we're doing in the CIP, expand those opportunities where we can, and again, look at, when we have growth come in, I think Pam's gonna say a few words here before we have, we do have Strand here, that's gonna do a short PowerPoint for you, and just talk about, you know, if we have a mayor, a major tenant come in that wants to do a large plant or building and structure, we have to go find out where these opportunities are, and how we can get them connected, get the upsizing we need to be able to serve their need. And we don't wanna lose those economic growth opportunities because we're spending time trying to figure out how we're gonna serve them. We wanna know how we're gonna serve them in advance. Hope I didn't say everything you were gonna say.
No, I think from an economic standpoint, you know, we really can't have what we had with the Highlands of Lockport Development when that came through, when they came through, there was a lot of time spent discussing and going back and forth about how utilities would be provided to that property. Now, we had time in the academy on our side, because it was still kinda sluggish, so the applicant himself was not real anxious to get the project started. However, as the economy continues to improve, I mean, it's really important when we have those initial sit-down pre-application meetings or, you know, concept meetings with potential applicants and users, that we're able to describe to them what we're capable of providing. With the changeovers, with community development now handling development, engineering, we've also talked with Strand to make sure that when we do have some of these pre-application meetings, that they're also involved, since they're the guys that are handling the water and the sanitary stuff. So I think it's, you know, we're on board with it, from the community development and economic development side of it. It will help to keep us competitive, because the last thing we wanna do is see development go somewhere else, because we can't provide sewer and water the way a particular business or entity needs to have that.
Okay. So, at this time, I'll ask, oh, Chris is already up at the mic. He's gonna go through a PowerPoint with you.
Yes, thank you very much for having Mike and I here tonight to present to you guys on these important matters for your water and sewer utility, and I hope my voice holds out through this brief presentation. So we're here tonight to talk about the near-term water and sewer system needs, and the development of an infrastructure growth plan for the city of Lockport. So tonight's presentation is gonna cover two basic topics for the water and sewer utilities. First of all, we're gonna discuss the capital improvement projects anticipated over the next five years, which we presented in two documents, that kinda laid out the, your plans. And then we're gonna discuss these two task orders that Ben and Pam spoke of, that kind of fell out of the process as well. First of all, with the water, near-term water projects continue the course of the past plan, and I think, I wanted that to be the first thing that was stated here, because I don't, you know, we, Strand came into this whole mix, and it was very clear that there was no need to recreate the plans that were in place. The city heard from several engineering firms in 2010, and chose a direction for the water system growth. And the first steps in that were to abandon three troubled wells, and there was some modification to some storage facilities. After those steps were taken, unfortunately, the recession hit, and things slowed down, water demands also dropped off. And that caused no replacement of those abandoned wells in accordance with that plan. That also reduced the maintenance of the existing wells, you know, it wasn't, you know, staff's hands were tied, I don't know if you remember hearing, do more with less. And unfortunately, in a lot of municipal water and sewer systems, that resulted in reduced maintenance. And that happened on your wells, that happened at your treatment facilities, that happened at your water storage tanks. And your distribution system improvements were no longer focused on expansion for growth and future needs, they became focused on fixing the troubled mains that were breaking constantly, and stopping that bleeding. So I'm gonna go through each one of those, supply, treatment, storage, and distribution, and the upcoming needs briefly. Growth and maintenance of your water supply is becoming a critical situation, this is a table right from that needs assessment. The first table shows your historic demand, maximum day demand of 5,625 gallons per minute was your historic maximum. Now that was back in the past a little bit, things have dropped off since then, the recession certainly helped, and water-saving fixtures and stuff like that have helped reduce that maximum day demand. But then the second table shows what your capacity was after abandoning those three wells. Your total capacity was less than your historic maximum day demand of, at 5,500. And regulatory agencies want us to take the largest supply out of service when we're looking at that. So you're, and that's called your firm capacity, you have to plan for your biggest well to go down, and still beat demands. And so that's significantly less than your historic maximum day demands. So, capacity is currently less than historic maximum day demands, and there are also many areas of obligated but unrealized demands. There was a lot of areas that water mains were put in, and infrastructure was put in, and houses were never constructed to use those. As those areas start to fill in, that situation is going to get worse. And as you can see here in Table 2, each of these wells that you have in your existing supply right now, become very critical. And so maintenance of those wells has to become a priority too, and I've talked about all these things, I think, in past, past meetings. Well 9 is even in that, in that chart, this is from a little bit older look at things. And as we all know, well 9 is currently down and being reconstructed. So the new water supply is not as easy as it used to be, and we've talked about this a lot. Councilman Deskin has been very involved in this process. Environmental regulations and, you know, recharge areas, and lots of factors, and lots of eyes are now looking at each new well. And this complex figure is what's created, and I can go into deep detail on this, as to why it's very difficult to get the regulatory agencies to allow us to put a well, where we wanna put a well, but it is, it is very difficult. And I've got on here, we need your help to keep the pressure on. We are at a point right now where regulatory, we've got requests into them to allow us to approve some sites, and we're not getting feedback, they've kinda gone back to the, to the stance, well, there's, more study needs to be done, more study needs to be done. And we're gonna be asking in the short term for some help to put some political pressure on regulatory agencies to give us some answers and let us move the system forward before an emergency. So this is right out of the study, or the near-term improvement plan document. This shows the water supply improvements that are upcoming in the future, that are recommended in the future. This does follow both of the plans, you know, from 2010, the plans all called for the addition of three new wells in the future, so this is continuation of the plan. The ones that are highlighted in yellow here are ones that are currently under task order already and underway. The ones that are not highlighted are future, down the road, projects. And you'll notice here, we've added rehabilitation of these wells, it is very important that you get into your existing wells, rehabilitate them. And the ones with iron filters need iron filter maintenance, swapping out of the media, that media's getting old, just like changing the filter on household, on the furnace or whatever, this media needs to be swapped out periodically. Several water treatment needs, already have loan fund preapproval, talked about this in the past. Iron levels in some of the existing wells are elevated and aesthetically displeasing. Iron-reducing water treatment plans for wells 9, which is now gonna be called 14. 10 and 11 have gained project planning approval for loans already. That approval is good for five years, so through 2019. And there's, it's always been the plan to add treatment to two of the three wells, because of funding limitations. The two wells with the highest iron levels were gonna be selected. Well 9, now 14, anticipated to have the highest iron levels. And then we'll look at 10 and 11 as we get down the road to those, to find out which one is currently edging ahead. Water storage facilities require routine inspections and capacity analysis to determine needs and priorities. For water storage tanks, they're steel tanks, paint rusts on them, purpines get old, things, codes change. Inspection is recommended every five years for those tanks. And the replacement or rehabilitation of coating systems typically occurs every 12 to 15 years, sometimes you can get 20 years out of them. And so, in the, in the upcoming projects, where, you know, it's recommended that you do inspections of both of your tanks to figure out what their needs are, and then plan for in 2018 and 2020 to address those needs on those tanks. And then additional storage needs analysis, you know, the past studies, one study said you needed more storage, the other studies didn't really address it. We think it's time, you take a look at it, to make sure you have enough storage. Storage becomes vital on maximum demand days and during fires, and we think it's important to run analysis as the system is starting to grow and to plan for a water storage tank. Is it 2020? Put an asterisk there, we don't know, but we gotta run the analysis to find out, hopefully, you know, it's something that you can delay longer. One key distribution system improvement project solves several issues. This plan for the water system didn't look at the mains that are gonna be replaced due to aging, and due to those types of needs. It just, for this point, looked at main additions and improvements, significantly helped the performance of your system. During the process of the Panda Tony Development Investigations, and then subsequently with the Boo Property Investigations, we fell upon this, this connecting main, you know, through the analysis, we found that this connecting main between about 151st Street and down to the Panda Tony Development significantly improves the performance of the water system in the, in the industrial park area, Division, and where the public works building that, and in those subdivisions surrounding that. It improves fire flows, because you, that storage tank that's on 151st Street can then supplement fire demands. And it also increases the firm capacity of the upper, of the wells in that zone. There's only two wells feeding that system right now, so if one goes down, in that, in that Division Street area, if one goes down, that becomes a concerning situation. Whereas with this connecting main, it increases that to five wells that feed the whole area, so a little bit less stress on the well system. Development drives need for future water studies and collaboration with neighbors, and I can't tell you how many different titles I put to this slide, because I know that studies is, is, it wasn't a word I wanted to use in there, but I did. But development is driving the need for future studies and collaboration with your neighbors. There's these environmental factors that we talked about with the recharge area, and there's environmental factors with the dewatering of the deep well aquifer. There's rationalization interest growing, and that's, you know, one of the first studies on here is the Public Water Commission. Public Water Commission was in place since 1972, I believe. And that's Joliet, Rock, that's Lockport, and then Joliet, Rockdale, New Lenox, and Romeoville are part of that water commission. They've got access to the Kankakee River, that is starting to move again because of the dewatering of the aquifer. And we think it's important that Lockport stays very involved in that, so that the decisions are made with Lockport's best interests in mind as well, and Lockport's best interests are not thrown to the wayside. Romeoville and Crest Hill share very similar issues with the aquifer and the supply aquifer, and a collaborative effort with them might come to some regional issues, or might come to some solutions that's mutually beneficial, win-win situations. So these aren't, these aren't real high-cost things, it's just staying in touch, staying in tune. The withdrawal, the Lake Michigan allocation, you wrote a letter a couple of years ago, asking to withdraw your allocation. IDNR has not acted on that letter yet, you still have an allocation, but the allocation is too small to meet your, even your average day demands. So we would recommend that you get a letter to IDNR saying, hey, please withdraw that request to eliminate our Lake Michigan allocation, and then attempt to get a larger allocation while they're giving them out. I mean, they've been very vocal about saying, there's plenty of Lake Michigan water out there, a nice thing to have in your back pocket.
But that only works if we actually get Lake Michigan water, and we have to go through that whole thing with American Water and all that? Is that how that works?
No, you have an allocation, whether you get it through American Water or, you know, some other source. That, American Water is the obvious, I guess, the closest supply source. You know, the lake water line from Bedford Park to Bowling Brook is currently in contention for another commission to take that over?
So when you say we have an allocation now, I'm confused, because I thought all the water we get is from well water.
Yeah, I'm sorry, so an allocation basically says, you're not getting any water from the lake, but if you said, hey, give me 2,900 gallons per minute, you have the right to get 2,900 gallons.
But I didn't have to put in all kind of infrastructure to get it, right? It's not like I just turn a spigot.
Correct, it's not connected up, but, for instance, the city of Joliet, I do not believe has an allocation. So, so they would have to apply for an allocation, and it's a big, long process, you already have an allocation. You have approval, preapproval to get Lake Michigan water, where, would it be available, or if you connected to Homer Glen?
We just don't have the capacity, because we're not hooked up right now to do that.
Yeah, each municipality or public water supply that has an allocation has a limited amount, that, you know, a certain amount that they can take. And Lockport's certain amount that you can take, and I wish I had brought that number, or had it at the top of my head, is significantly less than the average day, because it was an allocation that was obtained before a lot of growth took place, and before a lot of demands increased.
Just to recap, so basically, it's just an option, that, it's an option that's available to us, it's a small amount right now, and what he's saying is, we could ask them to increase that as an option, it doesn't mean we're gonna connect to it, because we would have to.
To make it really easy, if we would.
Would we not want to investigate whether or not that's a possibility, and.
That's what he's saying.
Cost-wise, and.
To understand the Lake Michigan water thing, we'd have to go back a few slides, like slide number two or three, with the first, the first tables, two tables that you had, and the numbers, the key numbers that were there were the peak numbers, what, 5,600? 5,600, 5,900? There we go, 5,625 over on the left side there, that's the maximum day demand, okay? Our allocation, from our allocation that we have from, for like, from the IDNR from Lake Michigan, is what, about half of that? Okay, so even if we were to say, well, let's go to Lake Michigan water, well, our allocation from Lake Michigan water doesn't even meet our maximum demand, okay? So the scary part about this, this, this chart here is, is we go to the second, the second chart over there, is, is we are, with, with all the wells that we had, which was including well 9, which is down, we were at 5,500, okay? So when, when it was decided five years ago to go ahead and eliminate those three wells, the, the decision was, was to eliminate about 1,200 or more gallons per minute. So we'd add 5,500 plus 1,200 to get us up to around 7,000 gallons per minute, that's our, that's, so we lost that, we haven't replaced it.
Alright, so let me ask a question, Chris, so I, is it, it's always been kinda presented to me that it's all Lake Michigan water, or all well water, there's no in-betweens? You can't, we can't do our wells now, and instead of like drilling a new well, tap into Lake Michigan water here to supplement, say, another 2,500 gallons, which would add it to our 4,300 that we have now, get some Lake Michigan water in there, instead of having to drill new, you can't, you can't mix the two, is that the case?
Correct, you would have, you would be a unique situation to mix the two scenarios. You could physically separate a system into, you know, you folks are gonna be on wells, and you folks are gonna be on Lake Michigan water, that might have some political ramifications.
Is there some, what's the reason why you can't do that? Why can't we get, mix the two?
Well, there's concerns with, with the seller of Lake Michigan water, with what you're doing to their water when you're mixing in your well water. That's, that's like the political side of thing, the person that's selling you lake water wants to sell you lake water, and not just sell you lake water when you really, really need it, because the cost to put in the improvements to just peak off of Lake Michigan water, it doesn't work out for this person that's, that's selling it to you. That makes sense. The other, the other issue is just the physical mixing surface water. The other, the other issue is just the physical mixing surface water with groundwater. That, those people that are in that zone where it's surface water one day and groundwater the next day and, and a mixture, it's, 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 uh, different temperatures, different water quality, uh, and, and it's not, it's, it's not aesthetically pleasing.
Okay. So your, your deduction is correct, like if you were to get an IDNR, and that's why he's saying the allocation we have currently wouldn't be enough. If we wanted to ask the IDNR for a larger allocation, that if we made a decision someday to go off of wells to have lake water, you could do it. If you don't ask for the allocation in the future, you may never get to do it.
That makes sense, yeah.
Right now, we have an allocation, it's just not big enough to meet our demands.
So the allocation we have is like a nineteen, early nineteen nineties allocation, when the city of Lockport was half of what it is now, okay, so-
So you recommended we, we, we ask for a seventy-five hundred water allocation.
Much cheaper.
Just to keep our options open someday.
Much easier and cheaper to hold on to the allocation that you have.
Which we, I believe that we already have. We already have done that, I'm, and I'm sure that's going to be part of this, this presentation, right? We've asked, we've asked US Fish and Wildlife, DNR, and all these other ones to take us up to our-
Yes.
At least our-
That's where I need your help, because we're not getting response back from them.
Okay, so we're trying to get it out of our wells, they're saying we, they're, they're dragging their feet, so Ben and I are going to go muscle them. All right, I get it. And you said, no, this thing with the American Water, is it, uh, is that just your idea, or you feel like that comes from somewhere else?
Which one?
Because, you know, all they do is smell collusion. Well, you can't get any more water from your wells, why don't you talk to American Water, our friends over here? Oh, so, um-
From me?
No, I don't know, it just sounds like, I, I can't, I'm having a hard time believing we can't get water from our wells. I'm wondering if we're getting roadblocks from people-
Yeah.
Higher up, because they're trying to push us to American Water.
There, there are, yeah, they, you know, when we asked, what, when we asked the, the people that were concerned about the, the environmental, the dewatering and the dragonflies, what are we supposed to do? We can't go deep. You know, their response was, well, you should, you should be going to Lake Water, you know, so-
And, and their response also was, just go ahead and drill another well, it won't be potable water, to go ahead and water the dragonflies. I swear to God, they said that.
So, um, so it, it's, it's not, it's not collusion or anything like that, it's that you can't switch the direction of a water supply. One year you decide you're going to go this way, and the next year, you know, that, and, and to go to Lake Michigan water is a, is a lengthy process, whether you have the allocation or not.
Yeah.
So, you know, as the situation with the, the current aquifer that you're on and the deep aquifer gets worse, you need to start at least having things, having the tools in place if you did have to start.
Well, no, I mean, I, like I said, I mean, you follow where I'm going, I find it fascinating that they're telling us that we can't get water from our own wells or drill new wells to reach our aquifer, and they're like, why don't you go get American Water? You know, we've made decisions in the past not to do that, but I feel like we're being kind of maybe pushed in that direction by these guys. It seems kind of bizarre to me.
Yeah, and I, you know, I guess I don't, I don't look at it as collusion or Ameri-, you know, they wouldn't say American Water, they would say Lake Water. I think they're looking at the same data that all the rest of us are with, with the deep aquifer, and knowing that that's not, you know, that's in trouble.
I'll take my tinfoil hat off now.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Hey, Chris, a quick question, how long does the allocation last? Is it twenty years with the IDNR?
Well, we've already said in a letter that we don't want it anymore.
I know that, you know, we went through that process. But if we increase our request, how long does that stay in place? So if we increase it to seventy-five hundred or ten thousand for Lake Michigan, is it twenty years?
I don't, I, I can look into that, I, I do not know that.
Just curious, that's all.
Well, in, in the end, this is going to be, it's really, there is some political pressure. I mean, like I said, Ben and I and Tommy, we, we'll get on this, because it's a matter of, if they're not going to allow us to drill wells in our own aquifer, then we're going to have to deal with the Ameri-, you know, Lake Michigan water. So we're going to have to push these guys to, one way or the other, to allow us, or make a decision not to permanent.
And in earlier meetings, sorry, Mike, not to keep going on, but in earlier meetings with the, the regulators, it was very positive that they were going to allow wells to be drilled near the, near I-355 corridor. But as time goes on, they're backing away from that, and that's where we need to step in now, I think.
Well, and that was where Darren stepped in, when they basically designated the entire city of Lockport a dragonfly habitat, seriously? So, okay.
I, I think the, the things that a lot of people don't understand is that the Lake Michigan and all of the lakes there are probably one of the largest freshwater lakes right in, in the world. So they're just, as a region, they're saying, just grab water from there. But there's a lot of logistics in getting that water all the way down, and who you're paying, and every neighbor's tacking on, so-
Yeah, no, it seems, it always seems like a big money scam to me. That's why I get like hesitant, it's like, I've always heard that, it's very expensive, you gotta pay everybody along the way, they're cut.
And there's a lot of people along the way that, uh, we're villages that we have to tie into.
Yeah, so that, that's why I'm-
The price of water could change, where it's not just the infrastructure to connect and get it, then, then now you're buying water from somebody.
And if you guys remember the old Hiram Norton story, he built that hydraulic basin, and then he needed water, and Chicago wouldn't open the locks once in a while to let water down there, and so he basically went bankrupt. So I hate relying on other cities along the way to give us our water. All right.
Now, that's conspiracy.
Yes, no, that was a fact.
Just an option to keep on, Chris, let's move on.
Okay. So that water loss analysis, and, and we, I think we beat the Lake Michigan water cost analysis. Water loss, just do the age mains and, and issues like that. Is ramp, is, is getting high in the city? You might want to perform a water audit analysis or a water loss analysis to try and pinpoint where the major water is being lost, and start to correct those issues. I hesitate to say this, but if you went to Lake Michigan Water, sometime way down the road, they do have a twelve percent max on water that, that can be lost for that, and so you would have to start working towards that. Those two projects are, are showing for 2016, 2017. Joe would want me to say that, uh, you know, those can float out, those are, uh, obviously as funding allows on a lot of these things.
When we switched over to the new metering or the water, the backflow preventer, the testing and stuff, they, they gave us that stat, right? That new company? Like we were under the threshold, I think, or pretty close to it, when they, that's when I first got on the board, who's the, the?
The RFPZ Val?
RFPZ Val, let me have the- Sorry, keep going.
Yeah, um, in the past, you're, you're, I don't, I don't know what the, the current numbers are, but in the past and past studies, the water loss has been shown, you know, in the twenty percents. But that might be improving as, as age water main is being replaced. So just a summary of, of, of the projects that are, that are recommended for this year. The Water Infrastructure Development Plan, which is the task order that I'm going to, that's in front of you, that I'll, I'll talk about on the next slides. And then the rest of the projects we've kind of been through, of course, the yellow ones are, are currently under task order, and, and the other ones were discussed in, as part of this presentation. So let's talk about the Water Infrastructure Growth Plan Task Order. That's a, a result of new development inquiries. What's happened over the past couple of years is as developers express interest, we strand or ask to recommend water so, uh, water utility sizing and, and routing. The Water Improvements Plan from 2010 that the city is following really offered no roadmap to help us determine what sizes mains need to be, where these new wells should be. So the current process is kind of a one parcel at a time. Lockport, uh, Highlands of Lockport comes in, we look at that, Panatoni comes in, we look at that piece, and we model it, and we try and figure out. But we're not really stepping back and looking at the big picture and finding out, well, does this development way down here need us to actually put a sixteen-inch main through here rather than a ten-inch or an eight-inch?
Chris, I noticed one of the, the properties is in Homer Glen, if I'm not mistaken, the boot property?
Yeah.
Yeah, RFPA, which is our, our facility planning area, where we need to produce or provide water and sewer to customers goes beyond our borders.
Okay, through the FPA. Okay, thanks.
So tonight's task order develops a water system growth roadmap or, or future snapshot. It considers all the projects I, I just talked about and the anticipated future development. It's going to use the computerized water system model to develop optimum new lo-, new well locations, optimum new storage locations, if storage is necessary, additional storage. And then a water distribution system growth plan to meet regional needs. It's going to look at the overall plan rather than a parcel-by-parcel image to determine main sizing and routing. So you're going to know approximately where new wells or new storage need to be when these developments come in. So, uh, you know, you'll have it in the back of your brain, hey, I need, I need a well here, I need a, a well site. And it's also going to allow us to have much quicker response time to have this roadmap. And with that, I'm going to turn it over and switch gears to Mike for the sewer.
If you don't, if you don't mind, just chime in a little bit here, Chris, you know, so Chris just kind of spoke about the first half. We, we were working with Chris earlier on, and then we started working on some of these other developers and other considerations, and so we thought, we really need to address the, the wastewater concerns as well. So that, that first portion that Chris just went through, that's the task order that's twenty-two thousand dollars. And then the second task order for the sanitary, uh, the wastewater treatment conveyance is for thirty-two nine, and Mike's going to talk about that.
Two components on each, Jen. Thank you very much, my name is Mike Waldron. I haven't had the chance to talk with you before, so thank you for this opportunity. As Chris had noted, we did give a report, a kind of a, a near-term wastewater treatment conveyance system report that gave an idea of the next five years. I don't want to muddy up the waters, I'd like to focus on this year, because what we do, what we're looking to do this year actually is going to dictate a lot of what we do in the following years. So that's really what's in this red box here, these projects in particular. So what you're going to notice is that your near-term wastewater needs are generally driven by regulatory issues, number one, and by anticipated future growth, number two. Since your last wastewater treatment plant upgrades, which were in two thousand one and two thousand six, that's the last time you've done wastewater planning. Since that time, there hasn't been any really cohesive wastewater planning. In that time, development pressures kind of let up, like Chris had noted. So attention went from expansion and capacity issues to maintenance issues. But since that time, a few other things have come up. So last year, 2015, your permit for the Bonnie Bray wastewater treatment plant was reissued. And with that reissuance came a bunch of new requirements that the IEP A has placed on us. We knew that these, some of these were coming. This year, 2016, your Division Street permit comes due, and that'll get reissued at the end of the year, and we're expecting the same kind of requirements to come in that permit. Also, in the last few years, as you've noticed in a couple of things we've noted tonight, development pressures have increased. Questions have been raised about what's the capacity of city's system to handle both wastewater treatment and conveyance issues, both now obligated and future. So the city's progress, we feel, is necessitating us to put an eye on this and to, and to come up with a planning tool for us to use as we go forward. To give you some background on the regulatory requirements that are impacting you, under your Bonnie Bray NPDS permit, that, as I said, was reissued last year, there are three major things. They're asking us to do a phosphorus removal optimization plan. What that means is they want us to look at your plant as it currently operates and figure out how within that current plant can I remove more phosphorus from the discharge? They don't want you to spend any more money, but they want you to maybe play with your processes a little bit, get better at removing phosphorus. But then they also want you to go further into a phosphorus removal feasibility study. They want you to get better, they want you to get down to even lower levels of phosphorus, but they know that that's going to cost you money, so they want you to figure out, when you do that, what's it going to require and what's it going to cost? And all that information over the next five years, the IEP A is going to gather from you and from other treatment plants in the watershed, and they're going to say, is this feasible? Can we make these people do this? The third item is a capacity management, operation, and maintenance plan, you actually talked about that two weeks ago. That is a requirement for you to get a better handle on your conveyance system. Generally, they want you to work at trying to get clear water excess flows out of your treatment plant, out of, out of your conveyance system. All of those things we're already under task order for. The good thing, if you move down to the anticipated Division Street permit, your permit's going to expire at the end of this year. We have to reapply for that in March, we are under task order to do that, and part of that is us going to be going back to the IEP A and telling them what we think should be in your permit. But also, we know that the phosphorus in the C-MOM is going to come up in that permit, so we're going to deal with that plant as we deal with Bonnie Bray plant. So you'll see on here, we are under task order, same task order for Bonnie Bray, we're going to do it simultaneously for Division Street, and knock that stuff out right away. This regulatory stuff then gets us into figuring out how we look at the overall wastewater operations. Some of the things that we may come up with in this feasibility plan and in our study of the regulatory stuff on the treatment plant might impact your conveyance system. So what I'm showing you here, this is a map of your wastewater conveyance system. The colored area is your current corporate boundary. In that boundary, some things are developed, some things are not developed. This is what we call your obligated area. As we look at some of these regulatory issues on the plant, it might make sense for us to do some messing around in that conveyance system, maybe redirect flows to plant, to, to different plants, and it may be more efficient for us to do upgrades at Division Street or at Bonnie Bray, depending on what is going to be required from a regulatory standpoint. So this is where the treatment aspects start to become very holistic in your overall conveyance system. So going from the regulatory issues to the development issues, this is that same picture. And Councilman Perretta, this kind of goes to the question you had before, I'm noting to you, the colored area that is your corporate boundary, there's the facility planning area boundary, which is that darker, thick line that goes out wider and has a lot of white space. That's what your facility planning area is. We have to look at that as we move forward and figure out, how am I eventually going to serve that entire area? So pressures that's been coming on the city lately as development interests have come around, that's kind of spurred us to look at this and say, how are we going to deal with this? So as case in point, last year, there was a development that came in, we were a little concerned about treatment capacity. We did a study of your wastewater treatment plants and figured out where are we at from a capacity standpoint. Indicated to us, we're good now. We are good as we continue to deal, if we have to continue to deal with some of your obligated area, but if I had to deal with your entire corporate boundary, then we start getting into a point where we get to like eighty percent capacity at Division Street, which is usually a trigger where you have to start thinking about, how am I going to expand? With that, maybe there's some stuff in the conveyance system that we can do to move some of Division Street off to Bonnie Bray, which is fine right now, you could handle all of your obligated in Bonnie Bray and have no problems. So there's some balancing. Right now, there's no big plan that helps us know how to do that. In addition, I had mentioned your C-MOM program that we have to do by regulation, the C in that is capacity. So what we do from a capacity standpoint in the conveyance system is also going to help us meet this regulatory C-MOM requirement. So that's the background, those are the projects that we have slated for 2016 right here and right now. That is dealing with these regulatory issues and moving into studying your conveyance system. So if I can touch on the task order, the wastewater task order that's in front of you tonight that Ben had mentioned, this is going to provide vital information to the city's growth. Right now, as I mentioned, there's no cohesive plan regarding sanitary sewer flows, how we deal with capacity in the conveyance system, how we deal with expanding that conveyance system out to, to deal with future development. So as developers come in and they express interest, we have nothing to recommend to them, we have to go, as Chris had noted, parcel by parcel. Highlands of Lockport comes in, I'm kind of looking at it in, with blinders. We want to be able to look at it from a big picture and say, how, when those developments come in, are we going to be able to deal with them and deal with them quickly? So this proposal in front of you gives us that confidence to look at it a big picture, to know how to size things, to deal with possible wastewater treatment plant implications. If we get to eighty percent at Division Street, how can we help ourselves with that and have quicker response time? So, that took seven minutes. Far less complicated, but, thank you.
Glad, Jen, so I appreciate it, thank you so much. Well, I, I just have a couple of comments. You know, I, I, um, having lived in this town my entire life and have observed, um, more city council meetings than I could ever possibly count over the past forty years or so. What has always really happened in regards to water and sewer, and let's be honest, that probably is, you know, without water, we don't have a town. You know, towns are always, it's real simple, where, wherever you go, is, is why is a, why, why is that town there? It's either going to be a rail line or it's going to be a water, waterway. And, um, for decade after decade after decade, those that have sat up here in our spots have always said, well, cut, 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 let's go ahead and let's try to be as conservative as we possibly can, and so- And so we've always been reactive instead of proactive, okay? And, and so what's happened with, with our water capacity as we speak now, you know, it's, it's, it's wonderful that we're able to provide water to our current capacity. But the thing is, is we can't look at just at today. We can't look at next week, and we can't even look at next year. We've got to be looking at 15 years from now. So all I would ask is, is as, as things get discussed over the next year or so, that we, we concentrate on what needs to be done instead of pinching pennies. Because pinching pennies has led us to the point where we're, in, in, in a short period of time, we have an 80% capacity operating plant at our Division Street. And we just simply can't, so if we're going to expand, we have to be able to have, be able to provide water, we have to be able to provide sewer. And we may have to make some tough decisions in the future that, that we're just going to have to understand the reason why we're making these decisions. So all I ask is, is, is that, that my fellow elected officials put in a lot of time and to try to understand, to learn as much as we possibly can about this, okay? With, with the well siting thing here is, we are, we're into a very, very small area. When, when Chris says we need to go ahead and exert some political pressure, we already have exerted some, and right now it's been kind of ignored. Because we had a meeting with, with some of the alphabet agencies back in August. And we have gotten, it's, now it's the end of January, and, and they've done nothing other than say, oh yeah, we'll work with you, okay? I, I think that we should need to go ahead and get a definitive from them by the first week in April. I think, you know, two and a half months is plenty of time for them to actually open up a book or open up a, turn on a computer to actually go and do something. I think that we, when, when they go ahead and, and push back, and they will, that we say, I want to see your scientific data. I want to see your data for the east side of the Displanes River. Just let people know as it doesn't exist. They're going to want us to go and do their studies for them? I'm not going, I'm not going to pay a penny for that. Okay, they're going to have to do it. If they can't provide the science, if they can't go ahead and provide the data, then we have to be prepared to say, are you going to be able, or stand up in front of a judge somewhere and say, we don't have anything, but we don't think that you want to, we don't want them to do it because we're worried about a dragonfly or a turtle or a bat. Okay, and that's where it is, you know? It sounds ridiculous, it sounds crazy, but this is what we're dealing with when we come to these, 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 these agencies. They have backed us in a corner, okay? And in reality here is, is if we don't push back and push back tomorrow and expect the answers by a specific moment in time, they're never going to respond. So I would like, I would like, I don't know how we do it, but I want answers to, I, I want, I want them to go ahead and give us a, a scientific answer to any question that we ask them by the first week of April. They're not going to want to do it, they're going to say they don't have any time to do it. I really don't care, okay?
Well, this is also part of the process, Darren. I mean, it's a matter of, I mean, you went out there and you got that information, which was very helpful. I mean, at least they were like, yeah, we'll work with you. But the fact is, once these guys, Strand comes up with some specific plans and placements, we can go to them with specifics and say, listen, this is where we need our wells, this is where we need these things. I think right now, everybody's talking in generalities, and that's probably some of the problem.
I, I, I think, I think what, I think you missed, I don't know if you misunderstood what I was trying to say is, it is, we have to be, we have to be, we can't let them dictate the terms.
No, no, I, I agree with you. But it's, all I'm saying is, it's like, we need to dig a well. That's fine. Where do you want to dig it? Well, that's part of what we're doing. They're going to want to know specific answers. They've been open to the idea of working. But once we have some better answers, as Strand moves forward with this, we'll be able to get, I think, it's easier to put pressure on people when you know specifically what you're asking for.
I, I guess is, is, let's not be cautious up here. Let's not say, okay, let's go ahead and, let's, let's not make a decision. Let's get, this whole, let's get more information thing. Well, let's, 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 let's just get it done. Let's just get it done and keep going on.
All right.
I'm with you. Um, the questions I have is more staff involvement. And you guys are doing this process. Who are you talking to? Who are you involving? What's their commitment to this process? And we've got several departments that are all obviously.
With regard to the plans, the near-term project plans, we worked with Amy, Ben, Joe, and Scott on those. With regard to the task order for assistance with development and, and that overall plan, they were probably copied, but that was more probably with Pam and Ben.
But moving forward, when you're doing these two task orders, what's, what do you see as everyone's involvement doing?
All of the above, yeah. I'm going to need a lot of information from Scott and a lot of information from Pam for the, for the water system one, as far as densities of, of envisioned developments, population forecast, what's going where. You may already have a lot of information on what some of these developments look like coming up in the future. And then as far as figuring out if more storage is needed, well locations, things of that nature, I'd be working on Amy and Scott and Amy on that.
Right, and just because I've talked to Pam, Ben about this, just concerns of, you know, you can design the system and design, everyone, there's, you've had predecessors that have designed things and they just kind of just put, got put on the shelf. And everyone has a different idea how to approach this. The, the institutional knowledge needs to stay with Pam, Amy, Joe, Scott, everybody here. So that they buy into this, everyone buys into this, they're doing this, you're facilitating this, giving that. And then we can move forward and really use that, like our C I P, like our lands, all that stuff. I want to make sure that it's not you guys just going away, coming back and be like, here's your plan, great, you know?
Yeah, no, thank you. Uh, the, the outcome of this for the water side, and probably something similar for the sanitary side, is a figure that shows water mainsizing going out into, to open space. It shows bubbles where wells should go. It shows bubbles where future storage should go. So that's something that had, that crosses from public works.
So you're picking Pam's brains on the new development? You're picking public works and everybody's brains on which side of the road? Size is what's maintainable and everything? You guys are on board with that? Okay, cool.
I have a question, Chris. You showed your slide in regards to the collaboration with our neighbors. And as you went along with your presentation, it became a little bit more clear to me on how would that work if our neighbors have the city water, Chicago water, let's say. Our neighbors have Chicago water, and how would that, how does that play with us? Because how do we tap on it? So I think you kind of explained that we have to maybe divide that off and all that. But I know at one time, our discussion was the reason not going with city water, the Chicago water, let's say, city water, I guess, is that our infrastructure needed much updating. So just kind of wondering, you know, you're talking about all that. Is that playing into your role too with everything? And as far as where are we at with our updating our, our infrastructure and?
And that's, that's where the water loss analysis comes into play.
Right.
I, I spoke with Dan Einert of I D N R, who I D N R administers the lake water allocations and monitors those and monitors systems that are on lake water for how much water they're losing. And I didn't name the community, but I did mention this situation where the community currently loses more than 12%, which is the limit. And he, you know, I D N R's current stance is that if you put a plan in place to get to 12%, to them getting off of the deep well aquifer, namely, but, but soon the shallow well aquifer, they would be willing to work with you on a plan to work towards 12%, but give you the lake water allocation early. You know, I don't know what the exact percentage is, but it's somewhere around 75% of the lake water communities currently are working towards 12%. But they don't, they don't, you know, they're above that with the changes in the regulations, so.
Right, because we do have to remember that, you know, once that comes into our town, we're paying for it, so. You know, it, those cost factors got to be like, I don't know, I just can't. I'm trying to fathom that, but I can't, you know?
And let's not focus water loss on just a lake water issue. If you're losing, let, let's say, 15% of your wa, of your well water, that's 15% growth capacity that you're losing, you know, to meet soon to be, you know, upcoming future demands.
Sure, no, I, I understand that, right, no.
And to be fair, what is the, most municipalities are at what? I mean, you can't be zero, right?
We'll talk afterward.
In general, I mean.
It really depends on, you know, some communities are very new. You know, I'll say, I'll throw a plain field out there. I don't, I don't know what plain fields is, but I would assume that their water system is fairly new and, and tight. But the city of Chicago, you know, some of the old, you know, island parks and, and those, you know, they have had problems with it being in excess of 20% for sure.
It's not feasible to actually say, we can get down to zero though, right? Right, no.
Every joint is going to leak something, everything.
I've heard it's 2%.
No, I, 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 I recall actually seeing, I'm sure our water department can go ahead and give us this. I remember seeing when, when, when this whole 20% thing that came up five, six years ago, okay? We, we did go ahead and begin to address, address those issues, all right? I don't know, it, it's not 20% now. I'm sure, I'm sure we can get a ballpark from, not tonight. But we can get a ballpark, you know? The thing is, for every percentage, every percentage, whether, and, and I just wish that people would get this whole Lake Michigan water thing out of their heads, since we've already have given up our allocation. They just haven't accepted that we've given it up. So for, I'm working for the point of view is, that's not an option, ever. So, um, so we have to look at our wells. But it's just a simple fact that every percentage point that we can go ahead and we, and we are improving with, like have a proven plan and all the, the new water mains, we're losing less water. I don't know what that is anymore. But it was, it was, it was, I recall it was a significant drop, oh, after, a significant improvement up to about two or three years ago. But I don't, I don't recall seeing anything in the last 12 months on that. And so maybe sometime in the next month or so, just from an information standpoint, not, no action standpoint.
And I, I, you know, staff is working diligently to locate the lost, the lost points and repair those mains and, and seal that up. And it is, it is, from what I understand, improved.
Yeah, I mean, we're definitely replacing water mains, so there's, it is happening. But you're right about the whole lake water. I, that's why I was actually surprised it even came up. I thought the ship has sailed, so why we're talking about, it's like, you got to make a decision. Either you're going to have a gas car or electric car. You can't like, let's, let's, you know, it's one or the other.
I, I think what Chris is saying is to be prudent. We have to have that old car in the garage just in case the electric car breaks. We've got a backup, some type of backup. It's an C Z free backup plan for the allocation that's there, break in case of emergency.
But we don't have it. We've already have, our city's position is, is we have already given up that allocation.
Well, it sounds like it just hasn't been accepted. We could in fact throw another letter in there. I mean, that's fine, that's all prudent, I don't have a problem with it. But the idea of like, it sounds like to make the switch, it's not like, hey, one or the other, it's a big deal. So it's not like, I, I mean, there's going to be, have, have to be some Armageddon going on to switch, it seems to me. So it almost seems a little fruitless, but.
Right, and look at California right now, California's struggling, they're water sources and everything. They never thought that, right? Vegas always thought that they'd have all the water in the world, but everyone's running short. Something could happen.
Well, there's no doubt. The likelihood of our aquifer drying up before Lake Michigan is probably.
Well, considering aquifer, aquifer is an extensive Lake Michigan, Lake Michigan levels is what, up about four feet from just five years ago? There's plenty of water.
It's fine, write a letter. And we're currently working on a backup to connect with Joliet.
We were looking at doing some Joliet connections.
2017, 2019?
Well, yes, we, we did have that study done. And I want to say the connection to Joliet was $2 million? To, to connect our system to theirs. So it's on my emergency wish list, but it's not exactly in the C I P yet.
They're more likely to come asking us for water than we're going to be going to them.
All right, any, anything else?
So I'm seeking to place both those task orders on the next council for approval. The $22,000 for the water sourcing and near-term wastewater treatment for $32,900.
All right, last quick question. How long does this task order take? This is a month turnaround, six months, a year?
I think, I think two, two months on the water, the sanitary.
By summer.
Sure, that's, that's, that's an idea.
Is something you want to put in consent or you want to come?
I'm okay, I mean, if we've talked about it, I'm fine with that too.
We've got three people that aren't here.
Well, that's fine, we could put it on an action item.
Let's put it on an action item.
Sure.
They may have some questions.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next thing is Chief. Let me talk about the rodeo, is that it?
No, it's about an intergovernment agreement. We have a, an intergovernment agreement, P C H one, is a intergovernment agreement between the City of Lockport and the Will County Sheriff's Department regarding the sheriff. A little, a little history, the, the Will County Sheriff currently transports those wanted on Lockport warrants, arrest warrants for people located out of town. They do that no charge. So if Libertyville Police Department arrests somebody on one of our warrants, the Will County Sheriff drives to Lake County to pick up that officer, not us, to pick up that offender, not us. So the Will County Sheriff is elected, and they have a legal right to do so by state statute, to either have us pick up our own people wanted on arrest warrants or have, or contract with the Will County Sheriff to have them do it. We have been in a consultation with them over the cost of it. And they basically estimated the number of warrants we had last year, and they came up with a price of over $7,000. So we, they have since reduced that to $3,868, which is the, which is the price of this intergovernment agreement. I don't think we could do it cheaper. And if we did, we would leave the city less protected because we'd have to send an on-duty officer wherever that person is located, including out of state. So as you can see, if we, somebody wanted on one of our warrants in California, if we just sent two officers there, we'd probably go through the whole $3,800 right there, so. The, the police department recommends that we do enter into the agreement, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
This is an annual fee?
This will be an annual fee, uh, this, starting March 1st of every year.
We did talk about this a little bit at the budget time with Lisa and Terry, when they had their budget requests. And we talked about the abilities of us spending money to have our people run things around. And really, it just made more sense to partner with the county.
Any questions up here?
I'm assuming it's because of the cost. It's cheaper to do it this way.
You bet, and more efficient.
Get Uber drivers to do it? All right, we good with the consent then on this?
Yes.
Anybody have new business?
You did mention the rodeo, and I know we had talked about that before. We did enter into an agreement with the rodeo. I know there's a lot of the council members do get complaints about noises. Terry and Tom and I had met with the county and the owners of the rodeo. We're trying to come up with a plan to make some modifications as to what they do when they hold special events out there to reduce the noise and impact to the surrounding community. So hopefully that'll help us out this summer.
Yeah, that was good. I mean, we do get a lot of complaints for that. So we did reach, the, the rodeo is not in the City of Lockport. We don't have any jurisdiction over it. But we reached out and asked if we could sit down and talk through this. And, and the fact is, I mean, these guys have been running the rodeo like it's still 1974. I mean, the world has changed. And as we sat down and explained some of the problems, they, they were understanding. And Chief went down, Sheriff's Department went down, they kind of looked at some things. I mean, just some simple changes. How they serve alcohol is one of them. That's, you know, I think they've made some, some shifts already with training and, and hours. But then even as comes to the noise, I mean, they had all these speakers like facing north towards Lockport. It's like, you know, just some simple changes of turning them, having them face south, down into the arena instead of, uh, I mean, we're hoping a lot of that changes some of the noise pollution.
Send it to New Lennox.
Send it to New Lennox, yeah. That's what I did, so the, yeah. First guy to talk to him gets the speakers changed, yeah, so. So it's good, we came up with some, some agreements, and hopefully that will, that will help, so. Thank you, Chief, and thanks to the Sheriff's Department too for working with us on that. All right, anything else? All right, looking for a. All right, looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Bob?
Second.
Second by Joanne, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, do we need five, or you just wanna roll?
Just roll.
Roll. All right, can I have a roll call, Alice, for City Council?
Petracos?
Here.
Donna Sampson, Gilogus Sampson, Smith?
Here.
Deskin?
Here.
Lindemir Sampson, Parata?
Here.
And Bartleson.
Here.
I present.
All right, I'm looking to have a motion for a consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got Darren and Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so on tonight's consent, we have the regular city council meeting minutes of January sixth, we have the committee of the whole meeting minutes of January sixth, we have our payroll period ending January third, there's the various bills, we have the NICOR Natural Gas Franchise Ordinance Agreement, and then there's the special meeting with the Lockport Chamber of Commerce meet and greet, launch him. So, looking for a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Brian and Jim, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Petracos?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Deskin?
Yes.
Parata?
Yes.
Bartleson.
Yes.
I view it as fair.
All right, what do we got? All right, so we need a motion to approve the executive session minutes as presented.
So moved.
Alderman Deskin?
Second.
Second by Joanne, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Pam, what do you got?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the CFP, Mayor has a decided grant reimbursement for property at one seventeen East Ninth Street. George Gatzis, who is the owner of the property, requested last year a reimbursement in the amount of seventy-seven hundred dollars for some building improvements. These were previously authorized under the program last year. The improvements to the building included rebuilding the first floor storefront windows and bulkhead. When this was approved, the original amount was eighty-two, or eight thousand two hundred and two dollars, which was fifty percent of the estimated cost. As it turned out, the cost came in a little bit lower, so the reimbursement amount is actually only seventy-seven hundred dollars. And so the applicant has complied with the grant requirements and that the work was all completed in twenty fifteen, as well as payment to the contractor was made in twenty fifteen. So we are requesting a motion to authorize the reimbursement of seventy-seven hundred dollars to Mr. George Gatzis for the completion of his improvements at one seventeen East Ninth Street.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, Bob and Joanne, looks good, guys, looks really nice down there, thank you for doing it.
It's really nice.
Very nice.
Shouldn't we vote on it?
Yep, I just wanted to say, good job first. All right. Yeah, now that we don't, now we're gonna vote no, yeah, so, all right, can I have a roll call, please?
Petracos?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Deskin?
Yes.
Lindemir, I'm sorry, Parata?
Yes.
Bartleson.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, gents, thanks. All right, and, you have anything else? Oh, some of you were there, I know Brian was there, JR was there, the Downtown Development Committee meeting, Joanne was there.
I was there.
Yeah, Darren, most everyone was there, except for these two guys. No, you guys are everywhere, so, but it was good, it was a good kickoff meeting, really getting the engineering and the Downtown Development Committee meeting together, so we could start instituting the plan for twenty seventeen.